All right. Welcome to the West Bath Planning Board Meeting, Tuesday, November 18th. I'm Gabriel Woodney, Chairman.
Jim Williams.
Jerry Mitchell.
Chris Cunningham.
And with us four, we've established a quorum. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No.
No amendments? All right, then we have our first advocates for Rockfront Properties. You want to come on up?
Yeah, I'm also with you this.
Okay. And disclosure, I guess, is I have a relationship with Hannah. I'm not sure how she's involved with this, but I don't know, disclosing that, there's no reason that I would be that I have anything to be partial about, but if you want to.
I don't know. You may have to recuse yourself.
That's fine.
This will be all an appearance of a complaint.
Absolutely, that's fine. Okay, so I'll
I mean, that's, I don't know, this is for discussion.
Girlfriend, friend?
Yeah, fiance.
Okay, fiance, yeah, what type of relationship?
Yeah. Yeah. Have to recuse myself if that's what the board wants. I have something I can be impartial, but whatever.
I don't care either way, honestly. Whatever everybody thinks. Whatever you think.
We sat in on one meeting for this one already, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so. If you think you can be impartial, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, this is your call.
I don't care either way.
Okay.
And full disclosure, like I mentioned last time they came, I did septic work. Okay, no.
You did the septic and we took the Okay.
We agree with it?
Yes.
Proceed.
Yeah.
So then, I guess, what do we have here?
So the new from last time, because that was what I focused on, is we have, that's the application, it hasn't changed. We have a new septic variance application that you could extend more.
Did the state, Jonathan, have you heard back from the state anything on the septic? On the minimum lot size, nothing on that?
No. Nope.
So that would be the only thing, like, that's why we tabled it last time, right? We hadn't heard any.
That's one of the reasons.
One of the reasons.
Yep.
But the variance, like, they will accept the larger septic that would fit six units now, right? Like, if that's what this is saying?
If, but they, but they have to approve it. The state has to approve it.
Okay.
Do you understand?
When I talked to him, he said he kind of gave you a verbal one? So he just needed the paperwork to push it through?
Yeah.
Because they said they need housing so badly, they were willing to
Yeah.
exclude the variance. So we have verbal, we just need the
Yeah, I haven't heard from the state guy, I have no idea if it's going to be, you know, the way they, you know, I mean, sometimes the state lets people review different things, so it's not, I mean, so.
I would assume, Jerry, I don't that's probably going to come back to you first?
Last time, he sent it right to you. I don't know if you remember that, he emailed you.
Yeah, I haven't gotten anything from either of them.
Last time, he emailed you for some reason, Jonathan. Yeah, he emailed you.
So they have this, and you're waiting for response? Is that what, for it to happen?
That's what, right. You sent that, you brought that to the town, Hannah, I believe, right? And then, and then this application, John, the septic application.
He sent it to them.
He did.
Yeah.
Well, is that what we're trying to do or?
Yeah.
I think, I think I may be confused, Jerry.
Yeah, this, I remember you called me about it. And we talked about the lot size. And you, you verified that Hannah changed it.
Right, well, right, and the footage, right, the footage that was in the protected area.
And then, did you send that to the state?
And then, that was corrected.
Right, because we had a survey done.
Right. And then, and then
No, I was, I apologize, I was under the impression that you had already, you had already ironed that out with Alex? Because you emailed him a while back and I
Got you, no. My interpretation was that you would send it to the state, like the regular septic permit, that you would send it to the, send it to the state.
Because they've already approved it.
Well, no, because
There's no variation.
I have a, you know, there's a, there's a local approval on that front sheet.
So I think, I think the only thing is, John, you just have to send it to the state.
Let me see that thing anyway.
So it was already paid the fee for it, they already approved it, then they just needed to approve the variance? Is that
Well, I think it all kind of changed, it all kind of changed. So I think they have to approve, like, the whole application.
That's what I thought he sent you already.
Yeah. Yes.
This is the second one?
These are, this is the new survey. That's when that starts the last meeting. So these are the larger surveys. So if you want to see the original, then this is
Oh, look at the one here. And you printed it out, huh? The usual.
And even the, the new survey, we have more shoreline, that's not the correct term. Correct me on the terminology of the linear shoreline frontage is more than the previous survey.
Was that the only issue before? The the septic? Was that the only thing we were
That, and I, and I told Sally too, and Hannah, that the only thing that I was not sure about, like, when I dug into the minimum lot size, all the minimum lot size stuff, was the size of the property.
Okay, and that was part of the survey?
When we thought the property was over an acre, and then they did this, they showed part of when the roadway came in, it just took some of that front piece off. So that's why it's different? Am I correct on that?
So what is the area, hold on?
It's just short of an acre.
I think it's .85. It'll save on that.
Number three, under them notes. Okay. Okay.
And then the other thing was the sprinkler system. So we have a proposal for the sprinkler system. So that's just a little bit separate though.
If we go back to the septic design. So you redid the survey, and you showed you had more shore frontage? So you were able to come up with a design that would handle the amount of bedrooms for six units?
So we applied for a state waiver for that, so.
For that.
For that.
Seven hundred and twenty, I believe, gallons per
So with that, Jerry, they already approved that once, the state.
Yes.
They approved, like, five hundred and forty, five hundred and forty gallons?
Based on a different, a different shoreline measurement.
Correct.
So now that I've looked this over, I was under the impression that they've already approved it once. If you're adding footage to it, why, why do you have to do it again?
Uh, because we increased the design flow. So we went from five hundred and forty gallons, I think, to seven hundred and twenty gallons. So we increased the design flow, so it was completely, it's like, completely separate. So it really, I think it really needs to go back to the state. And the other thing that happened too, is we went from like, one point zero nine acres to point eight three acres. So we actually lost, we actually lost some area, which I think is important for the state guy to look at. Because we told, the, the figures we gave the state guy were one point zero, I think, one point zero nine acres. Not the
Point eight five?
Yeah, not the point eight five.
Which I don't think will matter to him, because he's going to vary his statements, but
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's no longer going to be commercial, it'll be residential. So, commercial needs to stay over an acre. But we're requesting residential, correct?
Fully residential, and there's no change in the footprint, we're not increasing any building footprint. Just an existing structure.
But the only thing that concerns me about this too, is that it goes back to the whole one acre per dwelling, John. Do you know about that? Any guidance on that?
Well, I mean, it's it's a dwelling unit, but I mean, I don't know if you actually consider an efficiency apartment a dwelling unit. It's where, you know.
So if we had it as commercial, the way I read it is you can have up to eight dwelling units.
That's what I was, that's what I was basing off. And I don't care if you use it for business, or if you use it for residential. The point is, is it's in the business-commercial district, period. So that's allowable in that district. It's a good question, Jerry, it's kind of gray, I think. That's why I was kind of hoping to lean on the board for yours.
So let's look at the definition dwelling unit, I guess, is that.
What page is the definition on, John?
I mean, uh One twenty, one twenty-seven.
One twenty-seven.
About a third of the way down. A room or group of rooms designed and equipped exclusively for use as a permanent seasonal or temporary living quarters for only one family at a time. And containing cooking, sleeping, and toilet facilities. A room or group of rooms designed and equipped as a dwelling unit.
But then, is, I mean, I don't know if it is a difference, but it's a one bedroom. It's maybe not for a family, it's for one or two people? As like, an efficiency, instead of a family? Which might not be defined in there at all.
So, um
I mean, yeah, that's the it's allowed up to eight units, and there isn't an eight acre lot in that, that whole district that I, that I can think of.
Right.
So.
I know the, I think it would just be a privy, not conforming, wouldn't it?
Or just a non-conforming.
If this was one which, there's lots of those properties.
Well, if it had six units today, it would be non-conforming.
Right.
Right. It's a different, yeah.
Actually, after the survey, as it sits, it's non-conforming. Without doing anything. It's currently non-conforming.
Correct.
So we're not making it non-conforming. It already is.
But it's a change of use though, too.
Yeah, correct.
I mean, it's definitely a different use.
Correct.
So it says a room, a room or group of rooms designed and equipped exclusively for use as permanent seasonal or temporary living quarters for one family at a time. Containing cooking, sleeping, and toilet facilities. So to me, I think it meets the dwelling the definition, for sure.
How many square feet are the units?
Oh.
About, I mean, probably better than that.
Yeah, they're a little bit over that, but There was
Five hundred something?
Yeah.
Under six hundred?
Five fifty?
There's someone I saw the number six thousand, somebody's square feet, they dug under that fire, you know, one of the fires.
Yeah, and then it's including the third level, which doesn't have any buildings up there.
Sixty-three hundred square feet. So that's, yeah, that's it's included the basement and I guess the attic. I think each of those, I mean, I don't know how we can get away from that. I mean, that's a, I mean, each of those apartments is a dwelling. I mean, I don't see how we can not, not consider each of those apartments as a dwelling unit. So then the question is, you know, how many dwellings are allowed on that lot?
There's a, that's the gray area. I went through all of this, it's a gray area. Like what Jonathan was saying, it's just not stated exactly. So I guess it's up to discretion, I don't know.
Twenty-nine.
Might have different
Yeah, this is the old book.
And I did talk to the state, his main concern was, he said, we need housing so badly, that's why we're willing to do variances. So I was hoping that the city would be in the same state of mind that we, we do need extra housing at this point. And it's not changing the, the outside of the building at all. You're not, you know, we're not increasing the footprint. We're just adding, giving more housing to the state, which is definitely needed at this point.
Business-commercial.
Lot size.
So the non-conformity, where's the septic size?
Were you looking?
Well, but, but it's, but it's, you need
Jerry, what page, where are you?
I'm on my old book, on that table.
This is under Article three landing standards?
Yeah, Article three.
That's on page twenty-nine of the new one.
It is on the twenty-nine of the new one, too. All right, so
Under the business and commercial district, it does, the lot size, it says minimum lot size is one acre, which is
Not.
It's not, and is it, what zone are you in there? It's business and commercial, but is there an overlay zone there? Isn't the resource protection district?
No.
Overlay that?
No, I don't think so.
Is it on that? Can you see it?
Because if you, this is let's see. Where are we here, a little right?
Here?
Yeah. That's where, that's where I'm there. See your right there, see those dots right there?
It's on the other side of the road, closer to
That's, that's the resource protection zone. Does that sound right, Jonathan? Jonathan's not here.
The house next door is a residential house, like, right next door to it, it's the same zoning.
A lot of those houses came before the zoning.
Right.
You know, they're, they're grandfather used.
I'm sure the Grange Hall came before the zoning.
None, none conformal use. Didn't, am I reading it right? It's right after the tracks here, right? Yes.
No, it's before.
Oh, before the tracks?
Before the tracks.
Well, just on the outside of the tracks.
The tracks are aligned.
So here's the track here. Yeah.
It's right across from the
See those dots in there? And that, isn't that right, isn't that that, right there? So most, or if not all, that lot is in the resource protection.
So I know when Darlene was on the board, there was multiple times, different businesses, we had different talks about how many businesses were allowed in one, on one like parcel, based on the acreage. Right, because I think we ran into that to like, parquetts and other things, right? Like, if you did
Um, okay.
If you didn't have enough acreage, you could only have so many business fronts. And I think she was correct in that.
Okay.
Remember, I think, I think parquet was the big one. That, that was
Yeah, I know one of those specifics. But it's definitely in that overlay zone, would you say, Chris?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
We're going to look at those standards to
Over, over
Resource protection. So
So you guys have gone through the plans, because you've had them for a while now? So you guys are familiar with the, everything?
Yeah. You didn't change anything?
Yeah, no, yeah, you're good with all that, okay.
All that stuff is right in front of Tracy from the last meeting in that bag.
Oh, okay.
It's just, you know, a lot of it, so if you want to get some of it out, it's right there.
Well, based on what we're proposing, that's, you're just seeing if there's allowable room there to be able to go forward with it?
I'm looking at, we still got the septic we've got to deal with. And then, now that it's not an acre, and we're, need to determine if it's conforming or non-conforming. And can you have six dwelling units? Based on that lot size? That's what we're trying to, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
And the resource protection zone, do you not? I don't recall that coming up at the last meeting. No, I don't think so. And I'm not sure why that area is zoned at, anyways, because of that, that pond in the back?
Yeah.
That watershed area?
Yes.
I mean, it, it, I never understood why that area had that designation. The resource protection.
But it seemed like that's being taken into account with the septic application. Like, the shoreline frontage is being taken into account with the allowable size of the septic. So I think that's already accounted for.
Then if you go into the table three though, right, it said, and then there's shore frontage.
What page are you on, Jerry?
Uh, third, page thirty. So there's a hundred, a hundred and fifty foot requirement for shore frontage per dwelling.
Thing that's really great to me in here is that it's all, um, single-family homes. And they don't, like, every now and then they mention multi-family, but it's not really addressed. And I think it needs to be treated differently than a single-family home. Because the gray is not a single-family dwelling.
Right, right. So if you were to move forward with this, I mean, with this, would it be a zoning change? You guys were looking at doing this?
We can't do zoning changes, like, we're not allowed to at this level.
So what would it be that you're looking at right now, just?
Seeing if we could, if we could, if it's allowable under the current zone.
The current zone.
The zoning changes are done at a town meeting.
Okay.
The legislative body for the municipality of West Bath is the town meeting.
Town meeting.
So I see. In the council, Paul, the government, because the council can go on it.
Okay, but you mean, yeah. You're saying that you may not need that, we can leave it as is, and
Well, you were asking about zoning changes.
Right, that's what I was checking.
We can't do, we're planning board. We have to, this is, we have to go by
It's not really a zone, it's not really a zoning issue though, right?
It's not.
It's a, it's a land use. It's, it's not a zone, like, if you could change the zone, it wouldn't matter, right? It's more, it's more of, I think our code requires, this is what the code requires, you know, per per one acre, like, you know, per one acre, right? And you're, you can have, like, depends what zone you're in, obviously, right? But if you have a residential, you know, like, like the residential zone that I'm in, you can have, you have to have two acres for a dwelling. So like, what difference, like, say I showed up with one acre, right? And wanted to put a house in, that would be denied, right?
Right, you have ten, two acres.
Unless you do it ADU, you could do ADUs.
But it's an existing non-conforming
Right, it's already existing non-conforming, that's true.
If there was six unit apartments there, no problem, because that would be
Right.
But you're asking for a change of use.
I think when you go to the change
So it proves like you're pushing this to be another assembly use. So it can't be a change of use because it's already under one acre? So the only approved function is assembly?
No, so you can come in and, and this could be an office building, right?
What, how?
You could, because it's in the commercial zone, right? It's in the commercial zone.
What is it right now considered?
Assembly. Which, is that how they would, that's how it is in the AI office, I don't know what it is in there.
What's your question?
Is it just commercial, or?
Yeah.
It's in a, for business and commercial.
Right.
With an overlay zone, a resource protection.
Right, so wasn't it business before?
No.
That's an interesting question.
Yeah.
Was the Grange, it was a, it was the Grange.
Right.
Which is an assembly, I think
That's why I was asking what it is now. Like, is that a definition that we have? Because it wasn't
So you're looking at under the table abuses, is that what you're looking at?
That's what made me think about it.
It might fall under institutional, recreational, educational. But I, it doesn't, it says religious sectarian, non-sectarian denominational private stock of other than ministerial schools. That's on page twenty-one, B two. And it's a permitted use in business and commercial. That take a while. I feel like we must be missing something here, that's because commercial zone, you shouldn't be able to have more than, you shouldn't need eight acres to have a, six acres to have a six unit building.
Six different businesses?
Or six dwelling units. I don't know, I mean, because it's, I just wanted to see
I know when we had different businesses come in, like Darlene would calculate how many acres and divided, divided that all up. That's what I do, I'm about to ask.
See, like, an institutional, recreational, educational, which is what I think it would be labeled. They also have nursing homes, and they also have shelters.
So people could stay on as a residence?
They also have camping with board approval.
So in the visit, well, in the business-commercial district, I mean, all those things are allowed. And so permitted use.
Right, so
Now you're saying that a nursing home is allowed for something similar?
I'm trying to figure out if like, that seems like a classification. Like, if, let's say it's an elderly home, let's say it's six units, and they just say, okay, it's for elderly. Or which units for shelter? I'm looking at the principal uses.
Yes.
And then they have, like, ten infirmaries and hospitals. They have elderly housing number ten, they have eleven shelters, group homes, settlement houses, and halfway houses.
Okay.
So I guess, you know, this is like
Group home, VIW employees.
Yeah, it's like essentially qualifications based on use.
Okay.
So like, all those things under, are permitted the way that they are, so like, the way that it is, right? So if those are all permitted, the way that it stands in the zone that it's in, then the difference and I'm working through, I'm trying to think through this as I'm looking at it, but then if it's a six unit, like, what's the difference between a six unit and an elderly house that has six units? Or seven rooms for shelter, which would be employees, in both those cases, it'd be employees and dwellings.
Oh, I see.
So if it's the same in one, then it's like, if they just called it something different, is that what, what changes the situation?
Yeah.
If that's the case, do they need to call it something different?
If I might just point out, make a suggestion, the plan was to table this anyways and wait for the, this word on the stage on septic? Is that still the plan, correct?
Yeah, we need to, we tabled it last time because we didn't have the septic.
Yeah, I, at this time, I'd like to get it approved, I mean, we can get that, everything else I want to get approved tonight, based on that, just getting that septic, because we probably get that done soon, like, within a few days.
Like, if the state approves, you're saying?
Yeah, 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 but I want to get everything else approved through you guys tonight.
Right, as far as the fire issue is concerned, that seems to be all set unless anyone else saw the issue with that.
I don't see any issues with the fire.
That seemed fine, so then it's only the septic issue.
Which, according to Alex at the state, that I, my discussion with him, it wasn't an issue, he just wanted the update, updated paperwork, so...
I think that's true, but you also changed, you went from one, you, you went down, you went from one acre, over one acre to less than one acre. So I think that does matter.
So, yeah, we'll get that approved then. But I don't want to wait up for another month to go back, because we're, especially if we're putting the septic in this time of year, you can understand, we've got the winter clock ticking, so...
So, I'm looking at page thirty-one, and I'm at B two. If more than one residential dwelling unit is constructed on a single parcel, the minimum lot size and frontage requirements shall be met by each dwelling unit. How do we reconcile that?
Can you read the first slide again, the first part?
If more than one residential dwelling unit is constructed on a single parcel, a minimum lot size and frontage requirement shall be met by each dwelling unit.
Is that new construction? Because this is more like a term improvement on an existing building.
I think, yeah, I think the minute you change the use, that's considered new. I think that's, it's harder to ignore number two. If more than one, then it's just dwelling unit, period. And then if it goes on to say, for multiple detached dwellings on a single lot, including condominiums, the net residential acreage requirement shall be met. So that's even, that's saying if they're separated, you still have to meet the, the net residential acreage.
What was the part about the employee shelter or something like that?
Like the education was a...
Like, if, if this is just something about designated who could rent it?
Oh, right.
Maybe, is that the differentiation, saying it's for employee housing or something like that?
Yeah, since it's not spelled out, is there a gray area that would fit with this project?
I don't think it, I don't, I didn't see anything about it.
I thought Gabe said something, because it was like nursing, nursing home facilities or other uses.
Institutional, recreational, educational. There is elderly housing, shelter, group homes, settlement houses and halfway houses. Private nonprofit members' clubs or lodges, country clubs, if it goes on.
So B, to me, B two is not good, right? And then if you go to page eight.
Page eight?
Page eight.
Under non-conformant laws?
Right, because this is a non-conforming law, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So any non-conforming use in existence prior to nineteen seventy-two may continue, may be maintained, repaired and approved. Can't, it says that no, no such non-conforming use may be expanded, changed or to another non-conforming use.
Still existing building that's non-conforming? It would have to fit in with, like, some of the descriptions he just read, those would make it still, not, those would still apply?
Do you know where the change of use?
What's that?
Remember where the change of use definition was, or like, we're talking about that?
Maybe in definitions?
So John, you looked at this originally, how did you, how did you see it as having six dwelling unit, being a six, six unit? How did you interpret?
Well, I guess I kind of interpreted how Gabe, Gabe just looked at it, but again, I requested that they come to the planning board.
Okay. Yeah, but you were looking at it more as a different type of use, other than a dwelling unit? That might be the way to look at it.
I don't see any problem necessarily with the change of use there. However, the dwelling unit, you know, one acre per dwelling unit, I just don't see how we can...
Well, the change of use is what makes that relevant. Because if it's not a change of use, then it's just a non-conforming lot being improved.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and I guess...
Because it's commercial, there's a lot more permitted uses than there are in residential, or residential, so... That may be the one thing to look at, is the what permitted use in the business commercial would...
Apply.
Apply. Follow me? Because it doesn't look like you're going to get the dwelling units as a lot size.
Right.
But you could still have dwelling units with, if you fall in line with some of those other usages, though, right?
They are.
Yeah, if it has all the features of a dwelling, of these others. So then it becomes how we're labeling what the Grange is.
So if you go to page, page eight, back to page eight, non-conforming laws. The last, the last sentence says, if the law, basically it boils down to, if the law was created before nineteen seventy-two, it shall be exempt from the two-acre requirement in the residential district. So like, that's getting rid of... The minimum, that's getting, to me, that's getting rid of the minimum lot size. I'm sure the law, do you have any idea when the law was created? I'm sure it was before seventy-two.
It was.
The survey was in the sixties.
It was, yeah, those were, just a part of one was like nineteen sixty-eight, I think.
Grange was...
Nineteen twenty.
Nineteen sixty-six was the survey.
Sixty-six, yeah, sixty-six, yeah. And the Grange was nineteen...
And that's the old survey?
This is the old survey.
And that's the one that has it at?
One point oh nine, something, yeah.
That's the Maine State Highway Commission Plan, or DOT Plan. It showed the law and what was being taken from the law to build the highway, back in sixty-six, I guess.
So that would be their survey?
Right.
That's not, no, that's, that's a survey that Maine Department of Transportation did.
Right.
This, this plan right here.
That's what I'm saying, so in sixty-seven, before this was done, the lot was bigger than the point eight-five. It's only on this most recent survey that it got smaller.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I, I don't, I personally don't, I, I don't, if, if a lot, there's some stuff out there about, if the state or town is doing a taking for a roadway and changes the lot size, that the lot can still be considered...
What it was previously.
What it was previously, that it shouldn't change the, you know, the zoning and the uses allowable on the lot. But, you know, that's, that's something for a lawyer to do in sedition, I suppose, but...
So here...
I don't have any problem with a lot size, you know, a point eight-five acres, but I, I, I don't see how we can get by that. If it's a change of use, and how, that's, that's our question, Gabe said it earlier. You know, if this is a change of use, we consider it's a change of use, then we have to go to that one acre per dwelling. I did notice there is a thing on page twenty about conversion of an existing dwelling to accommodate number one or two families per dwelling, provide each dwelling unit, we have seven hundred square feet. That only gets us to two units.
But if we don't do a change of use and we just fall into one of those that's already permitted for, like, already approved for?
Then it's not a change of use.
Then it's not a change of use, and I think we can fall into one of those.
Well, let's go.
I mean, even for example, like, you know, education, if we have traveling nurses or something that want to stay there and they're here for an education program, they could use that upstairs office for an educational seminar or something? I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, but, I mean, there's a lot of different directions you could go. I mean, even if you have people here for an educational thing for, you know, sometimes they send them up here for training, especially with the Navy or some of the other facilities that need housing for, and here for training, would that qualify?
Max, what was your question?
Um, I missed the, I know that these are dwelling units, are they the affordable housing units that the state has because it'll be two thousand and three? Or they're not income limited, okay.
No.
And they're not, and don't you have to have a designated area for that too?
It's in your, it's in your growth area, so that's fine.
Where's the growth area?
Your growth area, your commercial and your business part.
Gotcha.
So, which I believe this is then, correct?
All right, so to me, um...
So like, you're saying if that, if it was the income limited, that would be another...
That, they could at least get, take three units and then you can get another one for an accessory dwelling unit. But again, I also don't know how the structure is laid out, so...
Right, okay.
And that's just approval tonight, and then they could obviously get the other half done when we have this ordinance updated. Let's just, Max is marking with us on the ordinance.
Oh, the ordinance, okay.
He's a consultant.
Oh, you're funding the gray areas and using them.
So on page...
I was trying, it's not...
On page thirty-one, right, to me, that's bad, uh, B two is bad, right? It clearly says, it clearly says that you need the requirements. To me, that, that's pretty much cut and dry, tells you what you need. Then you go to page eight, which is a non-conforming law, and I think it, I think it might take away that minimum lot size.
Okay.
You go to F, on page eight, F three.
But then, you're talking about F three, right?
Yeah.
Aren't they talking about the residential district? I mean, we're all residential district.
Correct, yeah, yeah. I wonder if they just said, they just said, like, the red, you know, just to refer to that table and they didn't go to all of the...
Yeah, which would be...
If it applied to one, I would kind of think it would apply to all, or maybe not, maybe that's, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, so it's kind of...
So in the current zoning and the current usage, you had a list of approved things, would any of those work with, doing the TI versus units inside for any of the...
Well, that, the point I was making, pointing that out, is that on some of them, there's not even a limitation, like an elderly home or a shelter, it doesn't say...
And that's not requiring a change of use, that's just, that's just asking for...
Yeah, and that's what we're essentially trying to sort out, is like Jerry said, there, like, there's the land restriction size, but that also kind of gets negated by a non-conforming law provision. So then it's, this is a change of use, and then we get into what makes the change of use and...
If we fall...
Yeah, and, but like, some of the definitions within...
It's current usage.
Yeah, the way that it could potentially be currently used would be essentially the same way that they would be changing it, you would be changing it to be dwelling.
So we don't need to change it, we could just...
Well, that's the gray area.
That's the...
That's kind of what we have to...
Okay.
Decide is, or figure out.
I don't know, to be honest with you. I think, I think on page eight, it kind of exempts it from that, that minimum lot size. Like, it's no different than where I built my place, I didn't have enough area, enough land, but, but the only thing was, I, going for me there was the residential district.
It does say residential, right?
It does say, it does say residential. I don't know.
Okay. So I think where this might fall on the current use is, well, under, on page twenty-two where it says, on number eight.
What, page twenty-two or page eight?
Page twenty-two, number eight. Private nonprofit community center buildings, I mean, isn't that where the Grange would fall? They're nonprofit in there, it's like a community center.
Yeah.
So where is it? Where did you go?
Uh, page twenty-two, page twenty-two.
We're looking at use, current use.
Yeah.
Page twenty-two, number eight.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that's, that's as close as...
Right, and that, and that's the point making is it's not much different from... Like, that's one thing, but in that same list, that's considered to be the same thing is shelter and group homes. Or elderly housing.
So they're...
Or, so like, that, I mean...
Oh, the elderly housing is the number ten?
Yeah.
So that works?
So, what, what about this, uh, of the non-conforming laws?
Page, uh, page nine?
No, yeah, I...
You just say, yes, yeah.
I'm just listening, I'm listening.
Of record, as a final due, it's a one sort of magnitude, without the need for a variance, provided that such lot is in separate ownership and not... Ah, listing ownership, all provision, yeah. And then all provisions of these ones except lot size and frontage can be met, variances relating to setback or other requirements. Non-conforming lot size, shall be retained in action with a port of appeals. Non-conforming lot of record. I don't know how the record should be reduced in size to increase, but, well, it's not being, that doesn't play.
So if we keep part of the building in a community use type, like, would we be able to, instead of office on the top, could we make that like a community art center or something? And have the... And have the, maybe the people, like, could stay there, maybe we have half the rooms for people that are attending the, or managing the art? I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, but just some kind of community use for that top floor, maybe?
Yeah, then it would fall under institutional, recreational, and educational.
That's kind of what, my brain is going to that right now, just as far as usage. What's the category right now, emerging use category?
It's in B, institutional, recreational, and educational.
Which is the same thing as what you just said, though, right? Yeah.
Number eight is private nonprofit community center buildings, adult education.
Yes.
Centers and other single facilities.
Right, that's, so that's following the same.
That does seem to be.
That would work for something like that. My only thought is it might change the fire suppression system, but that has nothing to do with their approval. Oh, okay, okay, so. Would it be if it was an educational? Unless it's private?
We go from the grange, a non-private nonprofit community center to a, to six dwelling units, that, to me, is a definite change of use.
But if we go to the educational, where you have some units in it, I mean, we could still do the six units, we still have plenty of space upstairs to do a educational community area.
Okay, so where are you, I, I don't agree with you necessarily, I just, I understand, so, which, say that again, how about?
Educational usage, but you could, um, educational, what was the definition on that one?
Well, municipal schools are allowed.
Daycare is listed, okay.
Daycare, libraries, museums. I mean.
So, yeah, I, I mean, that, that direction would work. But to me, just the, that it's allowable for shelter, group homes, nursing homes, it's more about like a label of specifying who's staying there. Without changing other things.
And if it's in a business area, right, that would be.
It's business commercial.
Business commercial.
Right.
So then, also a business commercial is retail business and consumer service establishments, right?
Where are you?
That's just on there, it's page twenty-four.
Okay. Which number are you looking at?
Well, I was just looking at the category E, retail business and consumer services, so those would all be in that area, in that, under that umbrella, but then also in that same category is motels, hotels, inns, bed and breakfasts, and.
I'm not seeing that under B? On page twenty-four.
Yeah, E, sorry. Motels, and those are all in that same category. So again, it's like, like, if it's, if it's presently considered a business a principal use, which is what it is, then like, if they were to call it an inn, I mean, that's a recognized business unit, right? I'm not as much trying to make an argument as much as point out that like, there's, we're saying that there's like, we have these different categories, but like, when we really dig into them, other than the labeling of them, it's kind of the same thing that's happening on the property, how it's being used.
Ah.
You know what I mean? Like, if it's a business area that's being used as an institutional recreational, which is acceptable under business use, also under, acceptable under business use is, according to page twenty-five, motels, hotels, and inns. Like, then the only difference would be changeover of tenant or bed and breakfast establishments, which would be five units.
What's the educational community?
Well, education, that's like.
You just have to have a component of that in there?
Well, it doesn't speak about dwelling from a part of the education. But the, what I'm saying is like, the, the motel hotel inn is a business. Bed and breakfast is a business, and they're dwellings.
Right.
And they're being classified as the same as how it is presently classified.
Right.
You have to go back to the definition of dwelling in it, and it has to have a, you know, place to prepare food and, you know, all those things that a house would have, you know, bathroom. A hotel would have a bathroom, but not necessarily, but it would be a, there wouldn't be a dwelling in it.
Well, some hotels do have, oh, yeah, it depends, definitely.
An efficiency apartment in, like a residence inn, that would be.
Yeah.
But that, but each, each of those rooms, then, they should be considered a dwelling in it.
Right. But they're not, 'cause they're called an inn.
Well, an inn has, uh, you know, five bedrooms or less to, to let.
No, that's a bed and breakfast.
Okay.
An inn, motel, and.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So we have this.
So you could do this.
So as far as like interpreting what this is trying to say, I guess I'm not saying, one way or the other, just pointing out that like, the way that it's being principally used right now falls under the business category, right? Under business.
Yeah, it's a commercial district, business district.
Right. And the reason that we're getting into these other things is because of the change of use, but, before we get to the change of use, if it falls under, like, like, there's other business uses, like, if they're to say, okay, we're applying for a six-unit, single-bedroom inn. That could be just getting caught in the weeds with labeling.
Right.
Well, you guys keep coming back to one acre per dwelling, I mean, that's, that's for lot size. So if we're calling it non-conforming, just 'cause it's under an acre now, that's, that's fine, 'cause it was before nineteen seventy-two. And then the permitted uses for that zone is that if it's allowed, this is how I'm interpreting, it's allowed to have up to eight dwelling units. Doesn't need eight acres. You want.
Because it's non-conforming.
Right.
Well, no, I mean, if it had one acre, it doesn't need an eight, it, that's, lot size has to be an acre. Not every dwelling unit has to have an acre.
Oh, right.
The lot, this is, this is, this is like, to create a lot, you have to have one acre in the business commercial zone, period. Then you can do any of the permitted uses on that lot. I don't, I don't, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
No, I'm pretty sure, like, we've always, it's always been the one, even for businesses, it's always been, you needed that lot size. But I think, I truly believe that whereas a non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
That it goes under that, that you don't need the square footage, and I know they only wrote, they only wrote residential, they wrote residential and the rural residential, because that's where you'd wanna build a house typically back in the day, right? Now, this, the, like, the zoning has gotten.
And they're strict too, first lot size probably, then, right, where the residential district would be more strict than.
Right.
Than a commercial or.
That's my take on it, that I think where it's a non-conforming lot, I think the, the minimum lot size goes out there, that's what I, I do think, but I could be wrong, I'm not saying I'm right. Max, what did you wanna say?
Uh, I think I was just gonna ask when you were thinking of having these units available and open.
Uh, soon, we already have a construction loan approved, so we've gotta get the appraisal done, and we're ready to move forward next year.
But, uh, if you were to give a rough timetable of the month, when a unit would be available?
Oh, let's see, probably be, like, seven months, so it's maybe July.
So I'll just point out that by that time, we will hopefully have done the ordinance updates anyway.
But we can't, we can't close the construction loan without this, I gotta permit to move forward. I, I, yeah, I tabled this already before, so I really wanna have a direction.
I'll hold my thoughts, Max.
I want a direction tonight, so I know which direction we're going, because I've kept the, the construction loan on hold for a little while, 'cause I've had it ready to go, 'cause we were close, and then last meeting, it got tabled, so I, I really need a, a direction, so I, I appreciate all the feedback and the, the, you know, to see which direction to go with this. I know housing is a big crucial thing in this area, that's the whole reason this inspired us to add more housing, um, you know, available, because when our son moved here, they said it was like a two-year wait for an apartment, when he first got hired at P I W E O. It's very difficult, most of the guys drive an hour, hour and a half, sometimes to get to work. Um, there's just not a lot of housing available, and if there is housing available, it's really expensive. Um, and they don't necessarily want a whole house, they go to work, come back, you know.
Yeah, and we're not arguing any of that.
Oh, yeah, so.
We're just beholden to this, that's why we're focusing.
Right, right, so, I mean, if, if this direction, I mean, less than six units, it does not pencil out, like, as far as building it, and, you know, the numbers just don't, do not work. If we go six units, but we need to go more into a different, like, like an inn or something like that direction, that still would work, because we could possibly do maybe some, you know, longer stays or like transitional people that get hired for a couple of months. I know the hospital also has traveling doctors and nurses that need that type of stuff too. Um, so there's a lot of different directions to go with it, but I need, um, feedback right now as far as what you're suggesting, if we just stay in the same usage we have.
Well, we can't really advise you on how we should develop.
Well, no, yeah, but I, I agree, I agree, but.
I just don't see.
What we have.
I just don't see a way past this dwelling in it, and that minimum lot size, even though it's a grandfathered lot, that would mean one dwelling. You know, 'cause it's, it's under an acre, and it's one lot, but we wouldn't allow, like, if, if I had a piece of land somewhere that was point eight five acres, I wouldn't be allowed for eight, uh, six dwelling units on it, even if it was created in nineteen twenty.
Right, well, I think, like, when they rezone my, my, the land where my house is now, it's now commercial, right? So I have two acres, so like theoretically, like going by what we're doing here tonight, I could put in twenty units, right? That, what would stop me from putting in twenty units on my two acres?
What's the minimum lot size?
Uh, two acres.
So you can have one dwelling, that's it?
I don't know, or you could have up to, uh, it depended on how you look at it, you could have up to eight.
I think you could have one, I'm not sure. But I think, um, you, I think, I think it's just a comment that you have to have per dwelling, you have to have the minimum on that, in that table. It should, I think it's.
If it wasn't a change of use, then okay. But it is, it's.
I say we get the take from the lawyer, like, we ask, I know it's not sound anymore, but we just get the take from the lawyer.
Okay.
Right, what else, I mean, that way, like, moving forward, we know, right? The lawyer does, does it pretty quick, that, John, how is the new lawyer?
She's, she's very responsive.
So, and how do we feel about the septic, we, we wanna approve it subject, I'm not approving anything today, but, like, do we need to see the septic approved too, or, I mean, or can we make it subject to that?
That's what we did last time, right, we, we made it conditional on, I mean, not conditional, we wanted the septic, right?
We wanted to see it.
Cause the septic was the main factor.
Well, it wasn't just, yeah, it wasn't the septic, but it was something from.
It was the survey had to be done, and then the septic had to be updated, if it was good, you got good results on the survey.
Yeah.
Cause you needed the good results, right?
Right, right.
But then the design flow, did that change?
It increased.
The design flow changed, like, based on the survey, to accommodate the six units.
Yeah, there was, there were multiple reasons, that's why.
Yeah, and then the acreage changed, so.
So you're, if we, what I'm understanding, if you're gonna have somebody look at it, if it's just a labeling issue, is that what you're thinking it is going on right now with what we're calling this and what we're doing with it?
I think it just, I just think it's.
If we stay with in our current usage?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it, it's a new use, there's no doubt, right, there's no, there's a change of use, there's no doubt in my mind, there's a change.
Well, that's, that's not question one for the attorney, is this a change of use? And the second question is, under the non-conforming lot allowances, would six dwelling units be allowed? And that's, I mean, that's the question, that, have I framed it okay?
Or is it exempt because of the provision that Jerry read? Right. Since it was.
Under a non-conforming law, um, regulations, rules.
So under, on page eight, F three, does this make it exempt from table three, right? On page thirty.
Yeah, twenty-nine. Which is article three A. Roman numeral three.
So if.
And if she says no, then could she look at doing an inn?
Yeah, that's my question.
Look, an inn has a staff, remember, right?
Okay, well, you're gonna need to look into what, an inn?
Like an inn.
So that it's officially an inn.
Right, 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 no, I agree with that, but I'm just, I wanna know that question, yeah, that answer.
Like, I, I think if you Google an inn, right, it'd have a, like, an innkeeper, right?
But, yeah, we don't Google by, Google, we go by our definition, right?
Yeah.
How many, how many, how many, how many D M B rooms could they have? Five, you say?
Yeah.
You could have up to five, and you could have staff.
In the sixth one, yeah, right, yeah.
I don't know actually about that, we need to check on that, might only go up to five, I think, but that would be another option.
Yeah, 'cause we've put so much into this already with this design, if we could.
Yeah.
If we could fall under those and, and change our perception as far as how it's operated, but, but to go, go back and redesign everything at this point would be a lot.
Well, we're not suggesting that you do that, and we're not making any suggestions.
I'm sure Ann would appreciate not having to go back through and redo this.
We're not making any suggestions on how you develop a lot.
I understand.
It's not our role, we cannot do that. But let's, I think a way forward from this point is to pose those questions to the attorney, and
can.
Uh, we'll, um, we'll move forward from that. As far as the septic plan goes, it may all be moved, I mean, it's.
Right, what scares me, like, what scares me about the septic is we went from over an acre till now, like, eighty, eighty, you know, eighty percent of an acre.
But it may all be moved anyway, that, if we, if, if all we're limited to is one dwelling, then that changes. And I think that's gonna be the answer, add, in fact, that's part of our question for the attorney.
Is what?
You know, since it's a non-conforming lot, what is the maximum number of units? Dwelling units, and it's, you know, is it one or six or?
What's the provision about the eight units that you mentioned? Could the lawyer be that?
Well, just an eight unit dwelling unit is, allow, up to an eight unit dwelling unit's allowed in a business commercial zone.
Cause it's business commercial, it's not residential.
Right, that was what I was, I'm saying.
So could you do that, the interpretation of that one? Yeah, what, what page is that?
So I'm new to the board, so I haven't been on these for years, like, then, I'm just surprised that you need an acre per dwelling unit in a commercial zone, I mean, that just seems.
That doesn't seem.
People do, they just built next to Rockies and Bath, a huge, like, I don't know, it seems like.
My que, my next question is, once they clarify, the attorney clarifies this, will you guys agree tonight to be, to go with their decision? Or do we have to come back to the board, or can we move forward with what they decide? If you guys all agree to move forward with the direction, the direction they give us?
We're gonna need to see what her, the attorney's response is and interpret it. We're gonna need to see what her, the attorney's response is and interpret it, and then decide as a board. We can't, you know, it's not gonna be a yes or no, it could be some contingencies and so forth, so, we don't know what those are gonna be. That, that's the whole idea, that going to the attorney is to find out what the attorney's take is. On the, on the objects, and the change, you know, change of use.
Right, there's a body that got a feeling that it's not gonna be cut and dried, that's the only problem, right, like I don't think we're gonna say yes or no. Um, in the past, we haven't met other times besides this, the typical meeting, um, if anybody would be agreeable to that.
I, I would be.
Do you understand, like we could plan on meeting next week, if we thought we had all the, I'm sure we'll have to in a week.
Yeah, that's the thing, like.
Yeah.
I think the point's already been made, but if the attorney says, oh yeah, it's no problem, you can't like send out an email to the board and say, does everybody agree? The board has to meet in person as a board with a quorum and vote on it.
So like we did, I mean, I don't, I mean, I think the attorney would get back to us by next Tuesday.
I would think so, dear, she's usually.
Let's create an invitation.
Oh, that's true.
You're on vacation?
Well, Thanksgiving might be, you know.
But you don't need to wait for another, uh.
That's what I was hoping, you guys could come after you get your answers.
We need a little.
We do need a little notice so that we can publish the meeting in the paper, correct?
Okay, okay.
How long is it, and it's published on a Friday?
Okay.
So you'd have to know I'm talking to the lady behind you. You can't see him.
She's, I can't see who you're talking to.
So, I mean, how.
I have to, I have to place an ad by Monday to have it in paper on Friday.
Oh, okay. So that will be the.
We'll see what we can do.
Timeline.
Okay.
So how do we know if we're gonna be though?
I can, one of us can.
Send an email.
Send an email out to the board that since.
Once we have answers.
The results you guys need to get together or whatever.
Yeah.
The other thing is, I will, I will get this to Brent in the morning, and I was with Brent at a meeting a long ago, so I know he is, he's up around the back, so I will ask him.
Is that the septic?
Yeah, I will ask him to, and expect that I won't get it back.
So, I think we'll have a good indication too, right, if they say, if the lawyer says no, like you can only have, if there's any less than six, right, you're probably gonna want to re-group anyways.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Do you understand, like you probably, you probably don't need to be.
Okay.
Right, I would, I would guess, right, if they came back and said.
Are we still gonna come and vote?
No, I don't think so, right, if we, if so, if they come back and they say you can only have four units per non, nonconforming dwelling, for whatever, you know, just making that number up.
Yeah.
Like you probably don't want to come back to the board with that, right, you probably don't want to re-group and try to figure out what you're gonna do, I would imagine.
Yeah, I think it really depends on what he says, I mean, if he ends up going with that, or he's like, oh, yeah, we can do the eight units, whatever, then, yeah, we just gonna need to know what's approved, like.
Then there could be, you know, at that point, there could be, uh, denial to approve from the planning board, and they could entertain, you know, moving forward with the variance.
With variance, yeah.
With the, you know, the appeals board, but again, I don't, you know, I don't know if that's possible or not, but.
That's always an option, though, any, uh, any action by the code enforcement officer or our, the board, this board, can be appealed to the board of appeals.
Right, right.
And, and that's, I don't think it's done very often.
Yeah, I did look into that though, yeah.
But it was done, and that's the role as the, as an administrative board.
Okay.
You're getting all the septic stuff approved, it's key, because that you can support.
Yes.
Those units?
Yes.
Like, that's key, absolutely.
Are you still planning on doing the office stuff?
No office.
No, no office.
If that could change, you know, so that it's not a change of use, I, I think they'd be happy to look into it, but right now, it's not.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Just residential.
All right, so as it stands right now.
We need to find out about the state's position on the septic.
Okay.
Number one, and if that's good, then it comes down to what the lawyer says about our questions, about how to interpret.
And I think we asked the lawyer about a lot, right, we're gonna ask the lawyer, either way.
Yeah, we have to figure it out for ourselves, because this has brought up some holes in our ordinance that we're just trying to interpret.
Yeah.
So do you need a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I guess. Yeah, we'll, uh.
Motion.
Table this.
To, to, yeah, I guess the motion.
Table this for, uh, till we hear from.
The lawyer and from the state.
From legal advice and say.
Yeah, um, motion to table this until we hear from the state and from our town lawyer.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Let us know when you hear from, from the state, and we'll get in touch with the lawyer and hopefully we can convene as, you know.
Okay.
Might be hard on Thanksgiving, but the week after, hopefully we could figure something out.
Yep.
Don't have any, uh.
Yeah, I'm not saying here.
Okay. Thank you, I know.
Thank you guys.
You've tested your patience with it.
We want, we, you know.
More hoof jumping, but we gotta have certification.
Yeah.
Yeah. What we want, I think, what we have to govern on is.
I have a better understanding now, though, that even within the zoning occurrence in us, there's a lot of, a lot of things that, that are good on, you know, as far as usability, I mean, it's, it's a lot better than what it's got.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not that thing.
So what's, uh, next?
All right, um. Well, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you guys.
Next, we have public information and comments.
Uh, anybody?
Good. Tracy, is there any other business?
No.
Okay, approval of the minutes from October, from, for October fourteenth.
Oh.
That's very, very shit, Paula. I do the.
Uh, second, all in favor, all right?
It's approved.
Next meeting is December ninth. Next official meeting potentially one sooner than today.
Yeah.
Be before.
Yeah, um, are we good with December ninth, otherwise?
Yep.
Okay.
I guess the only thing would be if nobody, if we don't have any applicants for December ninth, right, we potentially cancel that one.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's.
It's Christmas, very Christmas.
Okay, then, um, if there's nothing else from anyone, then move to the jury.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Okay.
All right.
See you next week, good night. Thank you guys, thanks, Sally.
Yeah, thank you, okay.